Good evening all. Welcome to the Bloomfield Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December fourteenth, it is seven P M. And I want you to please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wilkinson, would you read our opening statement, please?
Absolutely. Good evening. As Secretary of the Board, Bloomfield Board of Education, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our televised viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Bloomfield Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all of the items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Bloomfield Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to access, to address the Board. Decorm and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for order periodically. Should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities? I'm pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in the Bloomfield Public Schools.
Thank you. Item number four is consent agenda, the approval of the minutes for our last regular meeting on November ninth. Mr. Friedman?
Mr. Chair, I moved that the Bloomfield Board of Education approved the minutes from the November ninth, twenty twenty-one regular Board meeting as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved to second. Any edits or corrections coming from Board members? Any edits or corrections? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. It is so ordered. Item number five, several presentations, and I will begin with Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Good evening, members of the Board, colleagues, families, and our viewing audience joining us virtually. The Teacher of the Year Award celebrates excellence in teaching by recognizing teachers who have inspired a love for learning in their students and who have distinguished themselves in the profession. This evening, I am excited to recognize Bloomfield Public Schools Co-Teacher of the Year. They will also be honored at the State Award Ceremony in the spring of twenty twenty-two. At this time, I will welcome Principals Paul Guzzo and Jeff Bernabi to introduce our Co-Teachers of the Year, starting with Paul Guzzo.
You muted, Paul.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry.
Good evening.
I'm here to recognize Ms. Petrie, Mete Comet Elementary School's Teacher of the Year. Ms. Petrie is an outstanding teacher. She's been teaching at Mete Comet since January of two thousand and sixteen. Ms. Petrie is our most respected and resourceful teacher. When the pandemic hit in March of two thousand and twenty, it was Ms. Petrie who provided professional development for staff on the online resources we should consider using, such as IXL, Perdeck, and the Google Classroom. She was always available to help staff with any questions they had with the online learning. She helped facilitate and organize Mete Comet's Remote Star Assessments last school year. Ms. Petrie is Mete Comet's webmaster. We rely on her to post our parent newsletters and keep our website current. She also helped write our English Language Arts curriculum last summer and did an excellent job embedding culturally relevant lessons into our curriculum. She was working on this committee up to the day before her wedding last summer. Ms. Petrie is a positive person. She's always looking for the good in her students and staff. No matter what the challenge is, Ms. Petrie will tackle it with grit, determination, and a positive attitude. I feel honored and blessed to be able to have such an amazing teacher to work with at Mete Comet. Thank you.
Mr. Bernabi?
Good evening, and thank you. For the past five years, Eileen has been an asset to JEMs. She's a constant advocate for her students. Better than this, though, she teaches her students to advocate for themselves. When her students graduate, they know their own strengths and are capable of expressing what they need from others to be successful. Her students say that Ms. Herms, quote, "always has time for us." And they also say, simply, "she understands us." If you talk to her peers, other JEMs teachers would agree that Eileen knows her students as she is able to describe to any teacher what her students need in any of their classes to be successful. Bottom line, Eileen Herms is an expert teacher that shares her knowledge and love of teaching with all of JEMs. We're lucky to have her. Congratulations, Eileen.
Thank you.
Dr. Thompson, anything more?
Well, I would like to give our Co-Teachers of the Year opportunity to say a word or two.
Thank you. Good. Okay. Beginning with... Are they both here?
I don't see Ms. Petrie here.
That's why I was wondering.
Okay, then we can go with Ms. Herms.
Hi, aloha. Good evening, everyone. I'm here. I'm so happy that my video thing was on mute and you couldn't see me because I got a little bit teared up when Mr. Bernabi was just talking about my students. I just would like to thank everybody for this opportunity. This is like a great honor. I still can't believe it. But it was Wendy who hired me many years ago along with Mr. Lovlin and over Zoom, no less, which was strange, kind of ironic. But here I am. She took the chances. She hired me with my elementary ed experience. I'd forgotten all the math that I once knew in middle school and high school, but she did take that chance on me, and I relearned all of these skills. And I have to say that this has been, working for Bloomfield Public Schools, has been such an experience for me to be able to see, you know, working at the kindergarten through fifth grade level, and then being able to work at Global Experience Magnet School and, you know, work with middle schoolers and high schoolers. So I get to see, I've gotten to see the whole entire range of students with disabilities, and I appreciate that. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm glad to be here, and I hope to continue to work here for the future to come. So thank you.
Okay, is Ms. Petrie here? No. Okay. On behalf of the Board of Education, I just want to openly congratulate both of you. Outstanding, outstanding jobs that you have done to be selected as the Teachers of the Year by your peers. It's Board of Education meetings like this that makes me upset that we are doing this via Zoom because we don't have the opportunity to shake your hand and wish you all the best in the state competition. But we can all give you a round of applause. So unmute yourself, folks, and let's give them a round of applause.
Yay, Eileen.
And I look forward to seeing you again and to give you a firm handshake and wish you well. Other Board members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick comment. Yes, once again, I wish we were having, this was taking place at our board chamber so we could actually meet you both and, of course, shake your hands and wish you all the best, and thank you. You're the reasons our young people are achieving in our town, and this is, you know, it's an honor for us that you have been selected. So thank you very much.
Can I say something, Mr. Chair? Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Congratulations to you both. The fact that you were selected by your peers speaks volumes of your efforts and your dedication and hard work toward our students, and we just really appreciate you and all that you do. So thank you and congratulations.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I thank you so much. Item B, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, Chairman Harris, Board members, Dr. Thompson, and our viewing audience. Oh, and Dr. Burl Irene Bailey, right? I see you right there. I would like to take this time to recognize Dr. Burl Irene Bailey, who is retiring after eight and a half years with the Bloomfield Schools. Dr. Bailey is an amazing educator who has made an enormous impact on our staff and students during her tenure in Bloomfield. After only her first year with the district, our high school juniors scored above the state average in literacy, and gains were achieved across the board in a year that the Education Commissioner referred to Bloomfield results as a bright spot for the state. One cannot briefly summarize Dr. Bailey's career in education and specifically in Bloomfield. Dr. Bailey developed close reading strategies, close reading including numeracy and close reading for social and emotional learning, taught our students a new, more effective way to build language competence and reading comprehension. Dr. Bailey has trained our educators, especially in the areas of vocabulary development, understanding the interdisciplinary literacy connections to all content areas, and identifying historical and culturally responsive texts. Dr. Bailey has a passion for learning that is evident in her work, and I'm going to say on a personal note, I have never attended a meeting with Dr. Bailey where I've not left with a broader understanding of our students and literacy instruction, and we wish her the best in this next chapter of her life. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bailey, would you... I'm upset with you leaving, lady. I really am. It's going to caught me by surprise.
Mr. Harris, I get in line. But I'd just like to say, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Thompson and Ms. Stacy McCann for believing in me and enlisting me in the family, the Bloomfield family. I have had a wonderful eight and a half years working at the high school with Mr. Malletti and Mr. White, and now Dr. Mackey on the leadership team. It's going to be hard pressed. Dr. Mr. Malletti has already given me homework. He says I have to come back and do PD in January, but it's been a great eight and a half years. I'm not going to be far away. Bloomfield will always have a special place in my heart, and I know that there are going to be great things happening for Bloomfield. Again, I thank you for this eight and a half years, and it has broadened my horizon as well, and it was a pleasure to serve.
Well, I just, I want to add my congratulations. Again, you have been a solid member of our community. It just seems like longer than that because you were around before that doing workshops, et cetera, even back when I was working, and that was ancient history. So I do, I do understand, though, what you need, the need, and I'm glad to hear that you're not going to be far away, that we can still utilize your amazing skills in presenting professional development for all of our staff. Other Board members?
Congratulations, Dr. Bailey. It was a pleasure working with you these eight and a half years. All the best.
Thank you. Anybody else? Doesn't just have to be bored. I'm going to be a little more open tonight. Somebody else would like to say something? I can hear it burning in you, Jesse.
You know.
Go ahead.
But Dr. Thompson.
Go ahead, no, it.
No, you go ahead, Jesse.
Well, no, I was just going to say, you know me all too well. Dr. Bailey, it's been a sad few days for the past few days at Bloomfield High School because Dr. Bailey has definitely left her mark in everything that we do. Even as I look around my office now, I see her close reading strategies on the wall and things of that nature. But during her time here, you know, there's, and I don't know if this is appropriate to say, but there is a scripture that says, "Let your light so shine that others will see your good works and glorify the Father, which is in heaven." And so I'm happy that she is seeing my light because she joined my church, and so I'll see her next Sunday. So you're always going to be around. We love you, Dr. Bailey. Thank you so much for all that you've taught us, and we definitely will not let it fall.
Thank you.
Stacy, you want to? If you like. Stacy?
Yes, thanks. Dr. Bailey, you've left so many mantras with us in Bloomfield, from teachers don't get smarter, less administrators get smarter, our students don't get smarter unless our teachers get smarter. We learn from you every day. I have to say, Dr. Bailey will send us articles at three o'clock in the morning on a weekly basis. I mean, just her love for learning and her passion. Even today, we had our principal's conference, and she's still teaching us, right? And she's preparing presentations for us for January. I mean, that's just who she is, and we're going to miss you in six months. We're going to call you back. Love you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to speak, this is Dr. Bailey's daughter, Virginia.
Please proceed.
And I just want to say that I have watched my mom during her entire career, but specifically, I have watched her in these last eight and a half years, and Bloomfield Public Schools has such a special place in her heart. This was not a light decision that she arrived at. I really had to do some encouraging because it was time for my mom to rest, but she really, really wanted to stay for years, more years. And she really did not want to leave Stacy and Dr. Thompson and Mr. Malletti and Mr. White. She was really, really crystal clear about how much she really wanted to be there with them. So I do want you to know that she talks about you all every day. She wants the best for you all, and she really has gone there for the last eight and a half years with everything she has in her heart. And so I just want to congratulate my mom at this time. I'm extremely proud of her. She's the reason that I am an educator today, and I have learned something from my mom every single day of my life, and so congratulations, Dr. Bailey.
Wonderful tribute. We thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
Mr. Harris, I'd like to say in closing that I really want to wish Dr. Bailey the very best. Congratulate her on a job well done, and I want to take you back eight and a half years when I approached Dr. Bailey about joining the team here in Bloomfield. It was a critical time when we were beginning the improvement work at Bloomfield High School. We all know what Bloomfield High School was eleven years ago, and she played a very key role in transforming that high school. Dr. Bailey, I just want to say that we know how to reach you, and we value your work, and we most certainly will be reaching out to you going forward.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Item C, our student representative report. We have two students from the high school, Amira ETN Modess and Simone Dwyer. Ladies, the floor is yours. You're not muted, are you?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Simone Dwyer, and I am in eleventh grade at Bloomfield High School.
And hello, my name's Amira Eighteen Modess. I am also in eleventh grade from Bloomfield High School as well.
Okay. Please proceed. Ladies? You're both muted.
Oh, our slide's not going. It's kind of stopped right now.
It's on the National Honor Society. It should be on a different slide?
Oh, no, we're good.
Okay.
So this October, twenty-four students were inducted into the National Honor Society Bloomfield Chapter. So far, the chapter has done a socks, hat, and glove drive to support and donate as well.
On November first through the fifth, we had Spirit Week. We had Pyjama Day, Twin Day, Character Day, and Celebrity Day. We also had a pep rally outside, and our football team defeating Bristol Eastern, and we really had a fun event that I think everyone liked, which was the four-by-one on the new track, and that was really fun.
So our accomplished trumpeter Jake Battle has been selected for the music festival that will be taking place in January with our hand, our new band teacher, Mr. Bozeman, helping out. I think our music program now has really, like, taken off. Yes.
We had our Unified Sports is back on, it's starting November twenty-nine, and our team has been competing in soccer and bowling.
Two hundred and seven students have made Honorable and High Honor Roll for the first quarter with the reward of a donut and juice breakfast given by our dean, Mr. Shippey, so recognize their hard work and what they've been doing so far throughout the year. And we had our Harris Accenture Holiday Bazaar. Around thirteen families came, looked through the center. We had our two ponies from our farm, hot cocoa cookies, ornament painting that we put on our Christmas tree, as well as our FFA Officer Team was there. On November twenty-second as well, the State Officer Team from Connecticut came to do a walk-through through the high school and did workshops with some of the Accenture students as well.
Bloomfield High School wins a CCC North Fall Season Sportsmanship Award. This is the first time ever getting the sportsmanship award in the fall, but twelfth time getting it across all seasons overall.
Eight students have been honored with the TRIM Honor Society Award for Excellence in Music and Academics.
We have had College Boards National Organization scholars, Autumn Jackson, Dominic Lawrence, Danaya Carter Holder, Jerari Simpson, Lisa Ray McCollum, Mark Manson, Johnny Strong. They have received this by their PSAT scores, and this is a great way for them to get more access to good colleges and their scores to get around.
And our Bloomfield Warhawks football team had a great season from ten and oh in the regular season, defeating Morgan School in the semifiles and New Fairfield in the corner files. We got to the state championship, but sadly, we did not win.
We had a Stint Council Holiday Door Decorating Contest for home rooms. The theme was Deck the Hall's Holiday Movies. The winners will be announced this week, and here are some of our beautiful doors.
So our quarter ends on December fourteenth. Well, sorry, progress reports come out December fourteenth. On December seventeenth through eighteenth, the boys' and girls' track will be having their first invite. BHS Girls' Basketball will be going against Windsor at home at five fifteen. And December twenty-first, cap and gown fittings for classes of two thousand and twenty will be happening. And December twenty-second, we will be having an ugly sweater dress down day for all staff and students. And then our December break, our Christmas break, will be starting the twenty-third through the thirty-first. And then our boys' basketball team will be having their first MLC game at home at four thirty P M. And that is all. Thank you so much for having us, and I hope you guys have a great rest of your night.
Okay, before you, before you, before you leave, Board members, any questions for our students?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a comment. Ladies, once again, thank you for coming in front of the Bloomfield Board of Education. We thank you for your time and energy and a great report, and wishing you both a very happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Anyone else? Okay, on behalf of the full Board, I also want to say thank you, ladies, for coming out and and the happy holidays and Happy New Year to everyone. Okay. Public PTO comment. Do I have any PTO or public comment? There any comment out there? Public, any public comment? Okay, I hear none, so I'm moving on. Superintendent's report. Item A, Superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'm going to start with health and safety. School officials have identified a surge in COVID-nineteen infection across the country, including Connecticut. We're seeing this surge impact our school community. I have been reminding our school community about the importance of adhering to health and safety protocols, such as completing daily health screening. The West Side Bloomfield Health District is hosting free booster shot vaccination clinics in town. A free COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic for those ages five to eleven will be conducted at Carmen A. Race School Gymnasium from two P M. to five P M. on December fifteenth and January fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Wendy Shepherd Vanish, our COVID-nineteen liaison, will provide further details on data trends and vaccinations. Wendy Shepherd Vanish, our COVID nineteen liaison, will provide further details on data trends and vaccinations. The next item is celebrating diversity. The district will host a final Hollins Renaissance Program on Monday, December twentieth at six P M. This virtual event will close out the year-long Centennial Celebration. The student-led presentation will highlight the relevance and influential role of this nineteen twenty era. Highlighted by a surge in black literature, culture, and the arts. Portrait of a Graduate. We are continuing our work with the Portrait of the Graduate. During the months of December and January, the P O G subcommittees will complete their work developing objectives and strategies. The full committee will meet again in February to review progress. As we reinforce the alignment of all district programs and initiatives with the Portrait of a Graduate. The Donald F. Harris Senior Agri Science Center will provide you with updates this evening to their plan of excellence. You will see the connection to our four district priorities. In closing, I wish uh Board of Education members, school leaders, teachers, district staff, and families a wonderful holiday and happy new year. I thank you for your dedication to Bloomfield Public Schools. We're grateful to have you as part of our team. And I just want to say that may your holiday be filled with cheer, warm memories, and happiness. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Um, any questions for the superintendent? Any comments? Yes, go ahead, Lynette.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that uh report, Dr. Thompson. Just wondering where we are uh with staffing. Are we fully staffed now? Um, are we, you know, any gaps or holes in any areas uh for teachers?
We, uh, thank you for asking that question because that's something that we monitor very closely. And um, we're in pretty good shape. Uh, it is a challenge, and I'm going to let uh Mr. John Robinson kind of weigh in. But it is a challenge relative to uh coverage for substitute teachers. Uh, but as far as positions, uh, just about all the positions have been filled. If not, they're being filled as we speak. And I want, Miss, in all fairness to your question, I'd like for Mr. Robinson to weigh in.
Thank you. Um, good evening, uh, Ms. Easman. So, some of our um positions, teaching positions that have been traditionally difficult to fill are still problematic. Um, and in particular, the uh foreign language at Carmen A. Race. Uh, we've only had uh two applicants, uh, and we've done a lot of uh. A lot of advertising for it um on on normal platforms and even some platforms we've never used before. Um, and, and people just tend to either they're not qualified or they withdraw after going through the uh interview process. Uh, and then uh, two, two in particular, one is relatively new. That's the graphic arts over at the high school. Uh, after the uh, the teacher there resigned uh last month. Um, and then the technology position at GEMS. So, those two positions are very similar. Uh, they're, they're tough to find. Um, I think we have a, we have one applicant now for the high school position. We haven't had any for the GEMS. Uh, and Principal Bernabi is using other staff uh to fill those positions. Uh, and they're compensated uh in accordance with the the teacher contract for that. So, foreign language uh is a shortage position, and it remains a tough position to fill. Um, and then the um, and then the technology positions. I, one of the challenges we've been running into is really on the non-certified side. So, um, we've done tremendous amount of hiring with our instructional assistants. So that the, the non-certified staff who support teachers in the classroom, uh, and it's, it's a little bit like a revolving door. Uh, we've, we've brought a lot of them in. We've had some leave. Um, we're not exactly even sure why they leave. Uh, it's, it, it could be for better pay. Um, although we've done a comparison, uh, as I've mentioned in prior meetings with uh paraprofessionals in other districts. And we are sort of at the top end of the pay scale. Uh, it could be family issues, could be COVID-related. We're really not sure. Um, so, uh, in particular, uh, our special ed where those, the, not only are the needs growing. Um, but the pool isn't really growing, so that's been a, an ongoing challenge. But we're in pretty good shape. Uh, we're filling those positions. Uh, we have applicants. We fill them fairly rapidly. We have a really good reputation, so um, we, we've had one school where we've uh, we've had, I think, hired five. Um, special ed staff from now, uh, because once they find out Bloomfield's a great place to work, they call their friends. They come over here, uh, and that seems to be working out for us. Um, but, you know, I, I would be less than honest to say this isn't a challenging year. Uh, normally by now, I think we're, uh, we've, we've filled most of our positions, but we're having people leave at times that's uh generally unusual for us.
Are we doing um exit interviews when the teachers are resigning or leaving to, you know, to try to get a little more information as to why they're leaving? Uh, and also the um, the candidates who decide not to, you know, move on through the process. Um, do we, you know, have any idea why they're deciding not to continue with the hiring process?
Yeah, e- everyone is offered an exit interview, uh, and whether they, they choose to do it or not. Um, that's really up to them. We know that staff are leaving for more money. Um, and, and especially in the, in, in the non-certified positions that are not the highest paying in the district. Uh, if, if someone can, you know, and in fact, I'm sure you've seen um the, the economic indicators where. Um, employers such as fast food restaurants, other restaurants, retail are starting to offer more. In some areas, we can't compete, especially around the holidays where, you know, stores want people to hire to work in there. And if they can pay, you know, twenty-five dollars an hour, uh, that's more than we're paying for um, for our position. So, uh, but we have great benefits. Um, and, and I think that, you know, for the most part, we are competitive with other districts. But uh, it is tough sometimes to compete with the private sector.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Thompson? Okay, um, Mr. Guzman? Financial report?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and a good evening to uh, to all. Uh, this report is as of December nine, twenty twenty-one, and represents the first five months of the fiscal year. At this time, approximately three point four million dollars or seven point three percent of the adopted budget has yet to be expended or encumbered. I can tell you that the available balance, total balance decreased by seven point nine million dollars from last month's report. It went from eleven point three million to the three point four million I just mentioned. This decrease in the available balance of seven. Of seven point nine million is reflected at the bottom of this page on column three, which is entitled Expenses Theater Date. It shows a total at the bottom of sixteen million, one point one eight eight million dollars. This is an increase in this column of seven point three million from last month's report. You'll also note that the total of the encumbrance column, column three, shows a total of twenty-seven point one three one million dollars, which is an increase. Of six hundred thousand dollars from last month's previous report. These two numbers represent seven point nine million dollars that's reflected in the balance in the penultimate column. Of uh three point four million dollars. On page one of the report. Of the six-page report, you will see that uh. There are overages in the following three sub-accounts. Account one, 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 zero, salaries for teacher is, the amount is over expended by ninety-eight thousand dollars versus twelve thousand dollars last month. Because a dean of students position at Bloomfield High School was filled. Account one, two, three, zero, salaries para, the amount is over expended by one hundred and six thousand dollars versus forty-two thousand last month. Because of four new hires, three at Wintonbury and one at the intermediate school for children that require one-to-one. Um, supervision. And then account one, two, four, zero, salaries clerical, the amount is over expended by twenty thousand dollars versus two thousand dollars under budget last month. Because library clerical position at Metacomet was filled. Special ed out of district tuition receivables will offset the losses uh at year end. On page two. Of the detailed report, there are currently deficits in two sub-accounts on this page. Account one, two, six, five, salaries maintenance is over by a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And account two, two, zero, zero, social security is over budget by thirty-seven thousand dollars. Because of the additional special education positions we added, and I just mentioned previously. And finally, on page four. Of the detailed report, there are currently deficits in two sub-accounts. Five, six, three, zero, tuition private is over by two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And account five, six, nine, zero, tuition magnet is over by a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Totalling a deficit of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. This uh, this deficit is offset by the balance of ninety-nine thousand, one forty-two in sub-account five, six, zero, zero, tuition public. Bringing the tuition account, the total tuition account. To being over budget by two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Oh, this two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars reflects an increase in the number of children that we have. Uh, in our magnet school programs, there's been an increase of approximately thirty-eight new students that um, over what we budgeted. Um, and over what we had last year. So it's about thirty-eight new, new students that we have to account for in the budget. On, during the year. Uh, this concludes my report, Mr. Harris. Thank you.
Okay, any uh questions uh for Mr. Guzman? Okay, um, Wendy, any updates from your department?
For health and safety, we do. Um, thank you Chairman Harris. I'm going to leave my camera off because I've been having some connectivity problems. And I don't want to interfere with the report this evening. I'm going to share my screen with everyone. Uh, and so we'll start with vaccinations tonight and our vaccination rates. So this is the current data from West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. You can see here um all of the statistics for our Bloomfield residents. I want to point your attention um to our twelve to seventeen-year-olds to date for fully vaccinated. It's fifty-five point nine percent. Um, and ages five to eleven so far is thirteen point twelve percent. So I want to just kind of hold that in contrast. If you kind of just go down to the state overall averages, you can see for. Um, partially vaccinated across the state for five to eleven, it's um slightly higher at twenty-four point one percent and two point six percent. But at the twelve to fifteen is at sixty-five percent. So we are a bit lower than the state average, and um this impacts a very um much our decision-making process around. You know, how tightly we stick to our protocols. I'm going to go to our um COVID page this evening. You can see that our map is all in red as Dr. Thompson indicated. We're on a roller coaster ride, my friends. Um, we have been over the last few weeks up to eight percent and then down to two percent. We get happy again, but um we know that we are up again to eight percent tonight. And the way that uh COVID tracks is it does have those peaks and valleys. So we are monitoring that across the state relative to um our schools. And move down just a little bit here. Um, we have um overall, so this is what we look like in our schools. Um, we are at seventy-eight cases total so far tonight. Um, for this period last year, that's about double of what we had last year. So we've been busy, busy, busy with contact tracing, um, and you're going to find some more reports even this evening. Um, tomorrow as, as we go in, the majority of our cases are in fact um student. Um, cases, they are community cases, and we are finding a lot of cases when you get those multiple reports. That it is multiple siblings within the home that are getting sick, so it is a community spread right now. Um, and it does really hit families pretty hard. Um, relative to what that looks like with our vaccination status, you can see that the eighty-seven percent of our cases. Are among non-vaccinated members of our community, and we do have some breakthrough cases at thirteen percent. Um, relative to how things are doing in our school communities. Our testing and screening with our SEMA four partners has recently picked up over the last two weeks. Um, some positive um individuals who were asymptomatic and did not realize that they were COVID positive. So we were able to get them out of the community quickly. We are implementing our screen and stay protocols. Um, we do see a little bit of spread this year. Um, so that with those screen and stay protocols, we are monitoring the classes very closely. And if we notice that there is an illness outbreak and more than, more than one or two. Members of a classroom community are coming down with symptoms, then we are retracting from the screen and stay. Pro- um, protocol and going back to our regular protocols in order to keep the community safe. Um, as Dr. Thompson said, we do have some upcoming clinics. Um, he mentioned the fifteenth, so tomorrow we have um more five to eleven-year-olds coming in to get vaccinated. We have added a clinic, so December twenty-second, there is another clinic, and then the third on January fifth. Um, I wanted to make everyone aware that on December twenty-third. Um, the C I A C, we have new protocols and guidelines for our sports. So effective on December twenty-third, after we returned from break. Um, our youngsters who are um engaging in active sports. A new protocol will go into effect that will allow our um vaccinated players. To compete in competitive play, so during their um active engagement in play, they will be able to play unmasked. Our unvaccinated players will have to remain masked, so that will be a difference. Um, we have been working with our coaches and our nurse supervisor. So you can imagine this will require the coaches to be very aware of their teams, who is vaccinated and who is not. And those um rosters have been provided by our nurse supervisors. So we are um monitoring that very closely, and we know that for eligibility requirements. And to continue supporting these um new C I A C guidelines, we have to watch the community levels of spread. The vaccination status of the participants and how many of them are vaccinated. You're considering the level of intensity of the play and the activity. Uh, the physical closeness that the players get, the length of time that they play. Um, and how close they are playing to each other and the setting of the team or the sport and the size of the team. So we will be watching that very closely and monitoring that to make sure that um with implementation of those new protocols, things are happening safely. My last report for you this evening is we have um announced to parents and promoted and, and want to make all aware that on December sixteenth. So, um, this week, the Connecticut State Department of Education, to, together with the Connecticut Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Is hosting a virtual meeting for parents with Connecticut medical experts. So we have been promoting that, and we encourage all of our parents to um watch this session. As it will address the most frequently asked questions about vaccinations for parents, health and safety protocols, and social and emotional support. And any other COVID-related concerns that they have. So we have shared that with the community and um encourage all to attend. Um, that is my presentation for this evening, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Anybody have any uh?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Specific, we'll, we'll begin with Lynette, and then we'll move to Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is more of a comment. I just uh wanted to let everyone know what a great job Wendy is doing. We don't really get to see what she does behind the scenes, but um I did attend two vaccination clinics um at Carmen A. Race. Um, the first one. At Carmen Arice. The first one was a little chaotic, didn't really go as smoothly as everyone hoped, but I gotta tell you. Wendy was amazing and there were a lot of angry parents. She answered everyone's questions. She was very calm and eventually everybody got what they needed and I know it was painful for her. I felt my heart went out to her. But she did an amazing job and it was it was just really great to see, you know, just how she interacted with all of the parents. And when I tell you they were angry, they were angry. So awesome job Wendy. The the second clinic was. A lot better and it's through no fault of hers or ours. It was really the fault of the the medical staff and you know, the hospital that came. They didn't have everything that they needed. And like I said, Wendy was great. The second time around, everything worked out great. You know, everybody was happy. It was very smooth. So kudos to you Wendy. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Yes, I was not a happy camper, but we got we got that. Thank you.
Mr. Fryman?
I also wanted to state that I am, I and so many in our community are so pleased that our schools are offering these clinics for our young people. It's a great assistance to a lot of our family. My question, and I don't know if it's for Wendy or this might be for John. I know as a prerequisite for enrollment in our schools, our young people have to have vaccines for everything from. Measles and chickenpox and so forth and so on. Do we, and and I apologize for not knowing this, do we as, do we have a policy or is there something that we can? Look into regarding having a policy for our staff that as a. Part of enrollment or hiring process that we that they also have to go through. Making sure that they have the various types of vaccines, including the possibility of making sure that they have a COVID vaccine. Is that beyond what we're supposed to be doing?
It it is beyond what we're supposed to be doing to some degree. So the the current executive order. Gives us the the right to ask about vaccination. And and for people who are not vaccinated and they want they want to test, they can certainly do that. I think once the executive order ends, it is something we can certainly talk to our attorneys about. But that's a little bit of a slippery slope asking medical questions that are not directly related to the performance of someone's duties.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Any other board questions? Wendy, I got a quick question. I. Currently, right now, under C I A C guidelines. Everybody who is playing in a sport is supposed to be masked, correct? Well, I.
That's correct.
I caught the late night sports last night. And I watched a snippet of a girls' basketball game. Where. The mask is on the face, but it's nowhere around the nose. In fact, in some cases, it was under the chin. And. And I know how I'm gonna handle it with the state, but is there anything? That you can do on your side? Because I mean that's. Not only you got two coaches that are not holding kids to a standard, but you got two or in some cases, three. Referees out there that are not holding kids to a standard. So I don't know, you may not be able to answer that right now, but.
Well, but you are you are exactly on point and that is one of the concerns that I have. When we change from the more rigid and restrictive protocols and we move forward in this direction, right? We want we want everybody to be as close as normal to possible. We want to. You know, get kids active in play, but that's that's one of the difficulties is if the coaches are not following with fidelity. The the guidelines and the protocols and making sure that students are masked when they're supposed to be and wearing them with fidelity. Then we start to get loose around the edges and all these well meaning protocols end up putting us in a more precarious situation. So very, it certainly is a difficulty. Mr. Malletti has been excellent with reaching out to me whenever there wants. That you know, someone's scheduling an activity, talking to his coaches. And we sure as we move into this new protocol in December. That our our athletic director, Ms. Shonda Meyer, it makes clear the communication to her coaches. That we really need to be following this with fidelity so that we keep everybody in safe harbor, for sure.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wilkerson.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. This question is for Ms. Spanish. I think you're doing a wonderful job with regard to you and your role. My quick question that I have for you is what are we doing as a district to address some of the social emotional needs as it relates to? The the effects of COVID and its effect with in in the sports arena as well as engagement and curriculum.
So particularly for staff, you're speak for students, you're speaking, Mr. Wilkerson, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So you know, that's why so that's why we certainly, we we want to make sure that our students are engaged. We know how healthy it is for them to be interacting with their peers at this time. So you know, we embrace the protocols as they go forward and we want to make sure that they're engaged. In terms of our staff, we do have our student and family assistance centers. I will not lie, it has been more than a challenging year. We have gotten several calls of sad news. From former students to hospitalizations for young children and our school social workers. Are working overtime. Last year, we limited the number of interns that we had in the buildings to be able to support our social workers and have just more of that outreach. This year, because we were back to more standard protocols, we welcomed back all of our interns to make sure that we have a wider breach. Of of reach for our students and and more people to kind of support for for those social and emotional things. And then our staff has been impacted as well. So we are looking forward to our February second day and making sure that we are entertaining right now. And exploring the possibility of a presentation with the Giselle Institute of Yale coming in and doing a care for caregivers. Piece so that we can support our teachers as well because certainly they are on the front lines. And we need to make sure that their social and emotional needs are met so they can also meet the social and emotional needs of the students. So we are mindful of all of that. We have bolstered our social work support in the district this year. We did take up. In another full time position and we've actually added some a school psychologist as well. In in order to be able to support exactly those needs.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to new business. Item nine, A. Donald F. Harris Senior Agroscience and Technology Center Plan of Excellence. Anne Marie, Jesse White and Janice Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Thompson, Chairman Harris and our televised viewers. I'm very excited this evening to introduce Mr. White and Mrs. Edwards. They have been working tirelessly on the vocational agriculture plan of excellence. This program is vital to the district's portrait of a graduate initiative. As you know, we now have several committees working under the mantra of the portrait of a graduate. And all are strategically planning for our students' future. Just recently, the Vocational Agriculture Committee merged with the College and Career Pathways Committee. Our goal is to offer internships and job shadowing opportunities to our students. And to provide college and career pathways linked to our curriculum. Right now, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mr. White and Mrs. Edwards, who will share their work. Mr. White?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Good evening, Dr. Thompson, Mr. Harris, members of the board and viewing audience. Today you'll see the newly updated Plan of Excellence for the Donald F. Harris Center Senior Agroscience Center. I'd like to openly commend the Director of the Center, Mrs. Janice Edwards, for the hard work that she's done to capture the content of the plan. And for the leadership that she's demonstrated and making sure that center plans come to fruition. We would also like to thank Dr. Patrick Proctor, District Consultant, for the work that he's done. With the center and to ensure that the plan has been codified for consumption. Tonight, Mrs. Edwards will share priorities one and two of the plan. I'll share priorities three and four of the plan. And in the case of each priority, we will share the core strategies, the action steps, fidelity indicators. And indicators of adult practice. So without further ado, please welcome the Director of the Donald F. Harris Center Senior. Agroscience Center, Ms. Janice Edwards.
Good evening, committee members, parents, teachers, students that are in attendance. And our soon to be departed Dr. Bailey, which I hope she'll be stalking upon her departure. Let me thank you guys for attending this evening as we embark on our next level of work with the Agroscience Center. I'd like to share our Plan of Excellence as we move into our next phase. Our first phase was implemented with fidelity and we. We've been progressing, moving forward. As the mission is stated, I'm not gonna read for you because that's a bit daunting, but. When we look at our students' potential for leadership and personal growth. We meet the broader roadmap in helping the district develop its initiative in developing this portrait of a graduate. Next, please. We've worked with Dr. Proctor in crafting our vision that is similar to what we've had in the last. In our last presentation, however, we've changed the wording to address the portrait of the graduate as our work. With the district more closely aligned with the work that we've done with our Agricultural Science Center and the the direction that we're moving. As we look at our twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two goals, next slide, please. The center's goals are in full alignment with Blue Bull High School with the addition of three supporting goals. Goal number two, looking at a hundred percent participation for FFA, at least eighty five percent participation with our SAE. And at least ninety five percent of students attending the initiatives and activities that we offer here at the center. We'll talk a little bit more about the FFA and the SAE as we break down those acronyms for you. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Agricultural Science Center, there are nineteen of us in the state of Connecticut. We cover five main areas, animal sciences, aquaculture, natural resource systems, plant science and power and structure. Power, structural and technical systems. We'll break a little bit these systems down for you as we move forward. Next slide, please. Our plan follows the district's model of holistic accountability, rigorous curriculum and instruction. Positive school climate and family and community engagement. We will go in order as we move through the slides and break this information down for you to let you see how the district, excuse me, how the center. Is meeting the district's initiative for a portrait of a graduate. Under holistic accountability, we've crafted a vision statement that meets the district's goals along with local high schools' goals. And holds true to ourself that one hundred percent of our staff will be actively monitoring student progress. To ensure high quality engagement as we collectively work towards the vision of our graduates. And looking at our core strategies in partnership with the administration, community partners, our advisory board members. FFA support groups and external assessment teams, we plan on implementing the National Quality Program Standard Survey Tool. Developed by the Council of Agriculture Education to analyze all aspects of our agriculture program. In doing so, we plan on developing clear goals and objectives as we move towards those growth points. How we plan on doing this? Next slide, please. The survey tool comes with the seven keys to local program success. We will be conducting the survey tool that looks at program design and instruction, supervised agricultural experience, which is our SAE. FFA, which used to stands for Future Farmers of America, but it's now considered the National FFA Student Leadership Organization. Largest in the world. School and community partnerships will be looking at marketing, certified agriculture teachers and professional development and growth. And lastly, program planning and evaluation, which encompasses our plan between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty four. How do we plan on conducting? Or ensuring that we're meeting these? We have targeted growth points that will be developed by our staff by December twenty twenty one. We'll have identified benchmarks by January twenty twenty two. We work closely with the center centralized data team. That is supported by the high school's data team. We have a multi-stage process that we will can will begin. And July of twenty twenty one in reviewing all the data that we've tabulated through our survey tool. And begin implementing all new findings in the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three academic school year. In partnership with the high school, we plan on working with our Blue Bull High School to go through our data team alignments. Refresher and training to ensure that we understand the process and we're conducting our evaluation tools. Along with the guidelines of the high school and the district. In doing so, we hope that our staff, along with our key stakeholders in our community, are sending districts. Will be able to provide high quality education for our students and become a standard in the agriculture programs that we offer in the state. Looking at rigorous curriculum and instruction, which is our largest area and our heavy area of focus. We've broken down this section into the three main components for agricultural science education, which is FFA, SAE. And instruction. For the work that we've conducted in the past few years, we'll continue monitoring that plan. We've successfully implemented and achieved all the goals set forth in our previous plan. As we move forward, the one component that we have been cited for in the state is our power and structural technical systems strand. Through this initiative, we've put in place a pilot program to offer. Agricultural Mechanics One and Intro to Automotives, which has not been offered at the high school in the past three to four years. Through a pilot program, we'll be bringing those two courses back with the long with a longitudinal initiative. To the next slide, please. With the longitudinal initiative. To offer a three, we have a three year to five plan to offer a full strand. Automotives Two, bringing back electrical woodworking as well as welding. All these courses will be tied to the career strand for which students will in classroom instruction, learn how to manipulate. And then we'll have opportunities in the outside community to learn how to practice what they've learned. With regards to our FFA action step, this is our Future Farmers of America, the second component that comprises the three part model for agriculture education. We've designated a staff member to ensure and liaise between the community as well as other chapters and national FFA organizations. To ensure that our students are meeting the level of partnerships that we are supposed to with regard to leadership education in this organization. As well as to train and support staff and using the instructor toolbox as well as preparing students for career development events. At the local, state and national level. And achieving our supervised agricultural experience goals or SAE, again, we've designated a staff member to liaise with the community. To track and support involvement of all of our students and staff through the AET tracker system. As well as work with businesses, businesses and community to log a list of key partners. That we're able to have our students conduct placements in their professional organizations or work closely with our center. To develop research initiatives onsite. Again, documentation is the key. We are evaluated on a biannual basis through the state. So documentation of the course sequence as well as our three to five year plan for the program is put in place. This plan looks to exist between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty four. We'll have ongoing work with our national and state partners to support our teachers on the FFA. We'll have ongoing work with our national and state partners to support our teachers on the FFA dashboard as well as to support our students with after-school Tuesday and Thursday FFA-SAE young professionals training. Again, list of relevant partners that are in support of our students in order to meet those relevant trainings, young professional trainings that we're offering every Tuesday and Thursday. Thus far, we've been able to offer small business courses for students and developing their own course, e-commerce management, certified CPR, as well as our research initiatives and creating your own experiment for our agri-science sphere competitions. So again, documentation is key. All pathways through the end of this plan will be representative of what the state requires for all agricultural science centers. We will review on an annual basis through our NQPS, the National Quality Program Standards Tool, on an annual basis and work closely with our high school and district partners in achieving those goals. Mr. White?
Thank you. And in alignment with District Priority Three, the Harris Agro Science Center will continue to be a safe and healthy environment that provokes high expectations, enthusiasm for learning, and respect for students and all stakeholders. The center will share a climate survey to assess the strengths as well as the growth areas relative to climate. This data will then be examined and analyzed to determine additional strategies for implementation to address the needs of students and staff. The center will also use this action step and will share the survey with all stakeholders to gather data and develop strategies to address the needs of all of our students. This survey will be shared prior to the end of this calendar year, and data will be gathered by the end of January. Newly adopted strategies will be implemented in the spring. The strategy is directly in alignment with the center and the district's regular practice of using data to guide us as we continue to improve. This will continue to be a great contributor, I should say, to a greater knowledge of the many opportunities that the center affords, as well as an increasingly favorable climate within the center. As for Priority Four, we all know is family and community engagement. As we know, parent-community engagement is an essential component of a healthy and robust educational experience. The Donald F. Harris Senior Agro Science Center is committed to engaging families and community members as active participants in the engagement and the education of our students. In an effort to grow and retain a diverse student population, we will strengthen and retain a diverse population of students. We will also increase parent participation in center events and programs. We'll also strengthen the work of the center's Regional Consulting Committee. The center will also strengthen relationships with current sending districts. We will work to increase parent participation in our center activities and also enlist the support of Regional Consulting Committee members to offer guidance and support from our partner towns. As for our fidelity indicators, center leadership will continue to utilize a calendar of recruitment activities. We'll also utilize the Summer Enrichment Program, which is a program that we use to orient new students into the culture as well as the curriculum of the Harris Agro Science Center. And we will continue to monitor and record all progress on family and community engagement. Through these efforts, we will see improvement in student recruitment and retention, resulting in an increased number of students enrolled. We'll also increase, see an increase in parent and community engagement and ensure a more effective and impactful agri-science learning center experience for all of our students. Thank you so much for listening to this presentation. A copy of the presentation will be made available to you after the meeting. And we've now entered our question and answer portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Jesse and Johnny's. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. White.
Remember when we started the agricultural centers years back? Two questions. What careers do students go on to that go through this program? And what are the professions, whether it's right out of high school or beyond the collegiate level? I've always wondered, what careers do they go into? And I'm glad to see that the technical manufacturing, you plan to bring those back. Those are my two questions.
All right, Mr. White, do you want me to take that one?
Well, you know what? I'll start because I will say, Ms. Edwards, first of all, some of you may know A.J. Johnson, who is a well-known activist in the area. His wife actually came back during a presentation that Ms. Edwards had and talked about some of the things that she's doing. And it really, you know, brought joy to my heart to see that folks actually do go out and use some of the skills that they've learned in the Agro Science Center to work in agricultural sciences, but as well to work in other areas, right? And so we have a young man at this point who has his own landscaping company. And I know she'll talk a little bit more about that. But then that, as well as we see some of our students going into the equestrian sciences, as well as some who also have nurseries and things of that nature. So, Ms. Edwards, go ahead and take it away.
So though we only have one aquaculturist in all my years here, sadness to my heart, that's my background. Our students, we do have a diverse population. So when we talk about that holistic accountability piece, I do believe that our program actually supports the whole child and the whole community. So for career-wise, we have a protein scientist, I can give you the list or the gamut. We have lawyers, we do have students in vet school, we have educators, investment bankers, you name it. We have a librarian, I don't know how that happened, but I do like library scientists. So we do have a variety of careers. Going through our center doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be, you're going to have a career in agriculture. And once we think agriculture, we have a narrow-minded, like it has to be farming. So we have students that are genetically engineering plants. So if they are into plants, so we do have some kids doing genetic engineering. We have one that works for a chemical company, developing sense for protein. He fell in love with chemistry through our program. We have geologists, we have college professors and so forth. So I think the ag model helps to develop that whole child and gives you experiences and opportunities so that you can actually move in a variety of areas. I'm touching on Mr. Scully. I think one of the things that we do really well is offer students an opportunity while you are in high school for you to actually explore the things that you enjoy. So if you are interested in landscaping, you're going to learn it, and we give you opportunities to apply. So Mr. Scully, who has owned his own business since nine, mowing grasses, doing things like that. What we're able to offer him is a partnership with several community partners where he's able to work closely with Green Machine, several other agencies to learn about like bricklaying to lake patio, retaining walls, things like that. And as he developed his companies, one of the students that attended our Young Professional Workshop and Developing Your Business, he's in Phase Two, which is developing your plan so that he'll be presenting it to the bank. We've met with the accountant, and he'll be presenting his plan to the bank because now his business has grown and he's a senior now. But his business has grown too large for his mom's garage. So we're working.
That was very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Other questions? Yes, Ms. Bogalaski.
Yes, good evening to the board members and the community, and those of us who've been here. First of all, thank you for that presentation. It was very, very good. I continue to be impressed with the Agricultural Science Center. I piggyback on the questions asked by Mr. Ike. I have that interest. I'd like to know how many students are coming through the Agri Center and where they're going career-wise. I think this is an excellent program for our town, all the towns that are involved. I think one of the most powerful pieces of this program is and has been the presence of Johnny's Edwards. She has been there from the beginning and she is still here. And that has given us the continuity and the history, and it's been maintained, and she's had the opportunity to work and develop. I do think she needs more support because this particular program is a program that could absolutely be very, very beneficial to our students. It is also a program that is a 21st century program. And we need to be, I would say, more expansive in the way that we think about the agricultural science program. So thank you for the presentation, and I continue to have an interest. My son went through this program and did very, very well. So I continue to have an interest, and I'm particularly interested in the numbers that are taking the program and the career path that they follow. So thank you very much, both of you.
Well, we have, sorry, we have a center profile document that I can update and share with the committee. That's not a problem, and I do agree. To let you know exactly who's coming through, what the data looks like with regards to like finances, number, and again, to highlight our graduates, because we do have some amazing students. And I know that one of your children, I don't know how we got the singer out of it, but he did share some music, and I believe he's, I'm not sure if he's still in Cuba now.
No, long time back home.
Long time. Okay, so we've had students that have traveled overseas. We had a young lady that was teaching French and English in Taiwan, and she got that experience because she ended up attending one of our programs where we took her overnight to do some work. She had never really left home, loved it, worked with a diverse group of people and thought that it would be good for her to get into international management. And now, I don't know where on the globe she is, but I know she's done work with some companies in developing solar, solar cells and renewable resources in third-world countries. So we do have some dynamic children. Yep, thank you.
As well as probably the number of towns that are also involved. That's important info for other members of the board. Other questions?
That's Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So I have a comment and a question. So I'm a member of the Town Council Golf Subcommittee, and I would love to see a really strong partnership with Wynton Berry Hills Golf Course. I think, you know, there's a lot of things beyond the game of golf where the agricultural center and the students involved there could gain a lot of knowledge from the golf course and the things that they do there. But my question is, is the agricultural sciences, is that an elective course that the students take? Or do they get to kind of sample a piece of it at some point throughout their year? How does that work?
So our students coming into the program, you get science credit for the majority of the courses that we offer. So it's your science requirement. There's heavy science and heavy math in just about all the classes that we offer. Depending on the clearinghouse, that's one of, when we talk about students moving on for athletics or moving on to college, we need to make sure that the courses that we're offering do align to the clearinghouse so their students aren't at a disadvantage. But during our first year, our children get a little bit of everything. Unlike other agri-science centers, we do rolling admission where instead of just starting at the freshman year, that's the only year you can get in, our rolling admission allows students at any grade level or during any semester to actually take the course here. And what we find out is once you've actually taken a course, you end up being hooked. We do recruit within our Bloomfield area, not just at the high school, at the middle school, but we do active recruitment within our own general high school because I do feel that some of the programs that we have, every student should actually be involved in our center. With regards to the golf course partnership, I do agree with you. But we need to make sure that we have students that are knowledgeable. So we partnered with the University of Connecticut. So we have a student taking an ornamental and turf grass course, James Phil, that owns his own business, through the University of Connecticut, so that we're helping him prep for the state test. And he's been working with two of our underclass, two of our juniors, and helping develop their knack for ornamental and turf grass. So the goal is to move those two young men as he leaves into his place. So we are building that program, but I do agree with regards to the partnership for several golf courses, not just the two in Bloomfield, but the Hartford Golf Course. We've done some work for them.
Other board questions?
Let me say this. That's a, that's a real kept secret there. Everything that's going on back there. You drive by with Ms. Edward, you guys are doing some tremendous things. We gotta let the, get that out there, let the community know about it. That's serious. Very good.
She puts it out there. That's what I was getting ready to say, Mr. Ike. I've known Ms. Edwards now for more than thirty years. I know. Well, that's, I knew you when you were five. But, and, and back when the center was renamed, it was, I think, 1980 or 1990 something. I don't know. Ninety-eight. But she is the Agri Science Center. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna cry big crocodile tears the day that she tells me she, it's time to retire because we've lost, we will have lost an institution. She is the Agri Science Center. And you're right, Mr. Ike, I mean, we go by the place all the time. But she will be the first one to open the door and welcome you in. If you stop by just to say you want to take a walk around, and she'll give you a tour. And you can play with the animals or look at the fish or look at the, at the plants that are growing in water, hydroponics, I believe. And so it's just, it's a wonderful place to visit. And you still have, you got chickens there?
Yes, and one of the partnerships that I didn't mention, we now have a partnership with Saba, the processing plant, we do have a partnership with them. So any of the meat birds or organisms that we raise for food, they're processed there and sold. So we do.
Yeah.
For our vegetarians on the call.
Give her a buzz, and if she's got a half a second, she'll give you a little tour with a smile on her face. She, she loves her job. Thank you, Johnny's. Thank you, Jesse White, and for that wonderful presentation. October 1st enrollment data, Jason, Little Bomb. You are muted. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Harris, Mr. White, my screen. Thank you, Chairman Harris, Dr. Thompson, Board of Ed members, and our viewing audience. My goal for this presentation is just to give everyone an update on our October enrollment. The reason for the October enrollment is that is the number that gets reported out by the state of Connecticut through their PSIS, which is our Public School Information System for our students. So this is what will be publicly reported by the state and what's also used to help with funding for the district. So this year for October 1 of 2021, we had a total of 2,018 students enrolled in our public schools. As you can see, there's the grade breakdown. So at Bloomfield High School, we had 526 students. At Global Experience Magnet School, we had 186 students. At Carmine Aries Middle School, so seventh and eighth graders, we had 229. Carmine Aries Intermediate School, 232. Metacomont Elementary, 223. Laurel Elementary, 305. We had 303 students at Wynton Berry, so our pre-K students, and 14 students at our Steps to Success program. The next slide goes over the ethnic breakdown of our student population. We are 85% either made up of Black or African-American or Hispanic or Latino. So we are a majority-minority district, which makes Bloomfield very different from the surrounding communities. So that is a factor that the state does track and asks us to report. So this is the breakdown of our district. Looking at our special education numbers, it's something that we do track very closely along. Looking at our special education numbers, it's something that we do track very closely along with Wendy's office and Student Support Services. This year, as of October first, we have four hundred and eight students. That are identified as receiving special education services in our schools. That's a hundred and thirteen students at the high school, forty students at Global Experience Magnet School. Fifty-three students at the middle school, fifty students at the intermediate school. Thirty-nine students at Metacoma, fifty-four at Laurel, forty-five students at Wynton Berry. And all fourteen students at Steps to Success, which is our special education program in the district. Looking at the trend of special ed across the state and for Bloomfield. We can see that there is an increase in the state, but we are surpassing and growing. At a higher rate in terms of students identified as special education than the state. So as you can see in two thousand fifteen sixteen, only fourteen point four percent of our student population was identified as special ed. This year we're up to twenty point two percent, which is up from eighteen point eight percent last year. As you can see with the state, they've only grown roughly two and a half percentage points in that time. Whereas we have grown almost six percentage points. Another. Demographic that we track is our English language learners. We have a total of eighty-eight students identified this year as of October one. That are English language learners and you have the breakdown there. So four point three percent of our student population are English language learners. Most of those students do speak Spanish, but we also have students speaking Mandarin, Portuguese, patois. Asian Creole, Vietnamese, Arabic, so we do, it does run the gamut and there are. English language learning specialists at each of the schools. To help our students as they transition and they learn English as a second language. And just to look at the trend for Bloomfield compared to the state. Both have seen an increase and we have also seen a three percentage point increase year over year and the state has seen a slight increase as well. So we aren't above the state average, but we are starting to see more students coming into the district. With English listed as their second language. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, very comprehensive. Questions for Jason? Mr. Moore? You're muted. Mr. Moore?
About now. Okay, now the question that I, that I basically have is. I noticed under special education, the high school, I think it was like a hundred and thirteen, I don't remember the exact figure. But I was just trying to figure out, before they go to the high school, they, you know, usually come to the elementary schools and everything. And it looked to me like that number went up, so I'm just trying to figure out how did that happen? Do you know what I mean?
Yep, so, so I'll let, I'll let Wendy answer some of that, but I do know that with the high school being the largest school in the district compared to the other schools. There is more, more students there. If we look at the percentage across all the schools, they all roughly end up at twenty percent. But I'll let Wendy discuss that a little bit more.
Okay.
Yep, so, and it does have a little bit to do with the, the rise that you see across the district, so. One of the anomalies for the high school is, as, as we all know, we have, we have students that swing in and out of Bloomfield. Particularly, so we had sixty-three students, I think I announced this at a prior report, right? Of the students that moved into the district this year, sixty-three of them were special education students. That were already identified from other districts that came in with their IEPs. When we have those students moving into the district, very typically, it is my high, it is the high school that gets hit the hardest. With a large number of kids coming into the schools. You know, the, the, we have multi-generational families. That often have with our surrounding communities and of course, over the course of the pandemic with our families being impacted with. Housing insecurities and things like that, we have a number of students that might be registering as live with, with their families in the district. We do have, as we have discussed in the past, Bloomfield does have for a small district. A large preponderance of families in the district that do offer foster care placement to our DCF students. They typically end up at the high school, it is those older students that typically move around the most, so those are some of the, the. The characteristics there, but one important thing to understand about the high school is. When students are identified with special education, they are supported up until the age of twenty-two now. And that changed as of last year, it used to be twenty-one and now it's twenty-two. So when you see a hundred and thirteen, what you need to realize is they're not, not always there for just four years. Sometimes special education students need to be supported longer, for a longer period of time. And so what you get is almost kind of like a bottleneck, the high school now has the possibility of actually entertaining and having to educate students. For up to eight years, so that's why you see those larger numbers there, there's quite a, it's quite a number of variables.
Thank you.
Other questions? Other questions? Okay, thank you, Jason, thank you, Wendy. Cave updates. I'm gonna start this off and then I will go to. Ms. Easeman and Mr. Wilkerson if they want to fill in some comments. On November eleventh, there was a delegate assembly. At our conference, beginning of our conference down in. Groton, we were and. November twelfth was the Cave Caps. Convention itself, it was a one-day convention this year. Because of COVID, but it was the first time we had gotten together in two years. It was also my swan song, as you would have it, as the president of Cave. And. I did have the pleasure of introducing Dr. Miguel Cardona. Who virtually presented a, the Secretary of Education who virtually presented a. Comments to the, to our audience of about two hundred people. We were also the recipient of two leadership awards from Cave. And it was generally a very good conference. And so, Ms. Easeman, anything you want to add?
Just that, yeah, it was, it was a great conference, the sessions that I attended were very informative. I did ask Representative Bobby Gibson if he wouldn't mind coming to a meeting or two. To one of our board meetings, because it would be nice to know kind of what's coming down the pike from a policy perspective. From the state, so I, I really think that would be great information for us to have at our meetings here, so hoping we can get that. Those details ironed out, but yeah, it, it was really a great experience again and. You know, great sessions and information.
Mr. Wilkerson?
Thank you, yes, I too agree, I, I must say that it was a really great experience and. You know, getting to, to many of the workshops, you know, they, they teach you so many things. You know, that we should know as board members and one of the things that I will say it's one of the biggest takeaways. Is being able to connect with other boards across the state. Being able to see how, how they, you know, shape some of their policy, how they shape some of their, their district. In, you know, and what we can do as a district as well to stay ahead of the curve. And we can see some of the things that have impacted their districts as it relates to whether it's health concerns or certain policies. Or the way they enact certain, you know, certain protocols. As to, as compared to how Bloomfield does and so, you know, it was, it was very impactful and I'm looking forward to next year.
Additionally, on December eighth. That was last week. Cave held a. New board member workshop. In Rocky Hill at the Marriott, I think the Marriott, I lose track. Hotel and it was pretty much a most of the day conference. It was a wonderful workshop on CRT and what it really means. DEI work and. Mr. Wilkerson was in attendance. I was there to help conduct another workshop on the role of a board member. And, and our, our places where we need to be. Anything you want to add, Mr. Wilkerson?
Yeah, yeah, I would say that, that, that too was a humbling experience and, you know, being up. Yeah, you know, being able to see what the role is of the board and what the role, what, what the board's role is not, you know, all of those things. You know, because we kind of come in with our own perspective as to, you know, what we are going to do as a board, how we're going to make change, how we're going to make policy. You know, implementations, but then to, you know, hear some of the right, some of the wrong ways to do certain things. It's always great to hear those things and learn that and so, again, you know, in, interacting with other boards across the state. And then also hearing from some of the veteran board members across the state as well as to, you know, what's happening in the district. So, you know, that, that was a great experience and again, I'm looking for the next one, if there is a part two.
Thank you. Any questions for me? Or any of us? Okay. Board comments, Mr. Ike?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the first semester has gone swiftly by. I want to wish everybody happy holidays, I want to commend the students. Doctor, Doctor Bailey and the football team had tremendous season, unfortunately, they didn't. Weren't able to go get to the top of the hill, but I want to commend the football team. And lastly, I was, I was at a public meeting yesterday and I want to commend the administration. Doctor Thompson, Mr. Guzman and especially Mr. Robinson, they made me believers, they handled everything. They had it, they had everything, I, I got it, they covered everything, so I want to commend them publicly. I didn't get a chance to say it yesterday, but you guys did a tremendous, as an old bureaucrat, retired bureaucrat, you guys were right on. So happy holidays, everybody, and have a good year. I'm going on a cruise.
Another cruise.
Another cruise?
Yep, okay, Ms. Bogal as the guy.
Yes, I'd like to thank the students for their presentation, very good. And to congratulate the teachers who were awarded with the Teacher of the Year Award. Ms. Petrie and Ms. Vermez. And also to congratulate Dr. Bailey on her, well, what is her retirement, I guess. But it appears that we're not going to allow her to do that, just based on some of the comments. And I would like to thank the superintendent. For a stellar job, exemplary job, actually leading the district through the. Pandemic. And also those associated with him in doing that. You know, particularly Ms. Wendy Banish, who was so very, very good at giving us all of the details. Around COVID and kept us so well informed and thank you all very, very much. For what you've done during this, this period, what really has been two years. And not really a year and it's been tough, it's been difficult, getting the reports, it's been a challenge, I, I just want to commend you all. So thank you very, very much indeed and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Moore?
I basically just want to thank the students for their report. And the best of luck to Dr. Bailey and her retirement, how anybody talked about it, I can tell she's really, really going to be missed. I do have a couple of concerns that I'm going to be looking at. And they basically go to the health and safety update. The, the, the first one that I basically have is, I was looking at the chart that she showed about, I think it was the ages of five to eleven. And eleven to sixteen, I'm not exactly sure about that, but our, our numbers really seem to be low. You know, compared to the West Hartford numbers and compared to the state average. And I know she said that she's working on that, so I'm going to be following up on that. And the other thing that I have a concern about is our sports program. I know, you know, it's all about playing the game and being good citizens and everything else, but, you know, people like, people like to win. And I, I think one of the concerns that I have is, I just want to make sure that, you know, when it comes to our sport programs. You know, people are actually following this fascination stuff that we're, that we're doing. And I, I'm not going to say that I know because I don't know, but I just really want to make sure that. You know, some parents don't want their kids around unvastinated people, nice person, everything else. Some things could be done of religious, of religious reasons. But I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think if the governor puts a mandate out or these states of order or whatever, that's. What's supposed to be followed, I could be wrong, but I'm just checking that stuff out. And last but not least, I did, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Easeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just thank you to everyone who presented today, as usual, it's all great information. Really like seeing the students present as well. Congratulations to our Teachers of the Year, we are very proud of you, thanks again for all that you do. Dr. Bailey, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement, good luck in the future and yeah, it sounds like. People are not going to let you go, so, but good luck to you just the same. I am actually headed to Bahamas tomorrow with my daughter, little girl's trip, she has a gymnastics competition, so good luck to her. So Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year, in whatever you do, however you celebrate, just stay safe. Look forward to seeing everyone in the new year, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, for one, thank you to Amar and Simone for such a wonderful presentation. I think they, it speaks volumes as to, you know, what they're learning, what they're growing and, you know, how they're developing over time. You know, one of the things that they talked, that they touched on was over two hundred students that have been inducted into the honors or high honor society. I, I think that speaks volumes and I want to say congratulations to those who have been inducted. In addition, I do want to congratulate Ms. Peachtree and Ms. Herms. On being, you know, given the co-teacher award of the year, that's awesome. And also congratulations to Dr. Bailey, you know, your career speaks very. Your background speaks very high of you and, and the work ethic that you have done and look forward to working with you again in the future. You know, and then I also, you know, want to just say, you know, very quickly that, you know. The Warhawks have had an undefeated season, hopefully next year they will take us home with the championship. And so thank you to that and then lastly to Mr. White and to. Ms. Edwards on their wonderful presentation, I think that it really highlights the work of the, that's, that's being done in the Agriculture Center. I didn't realize how, how great you guys were doing and I always have known that the Agriculture Center has been there. But I didn't realize how, what's great work you all are doing there and whatever we can do to promote and highlight that and bring it to the forefront. So that others can get involved, you know, that's what we'd like to do and so again, congratulations to everyone. And I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, firstly, thank you to all the presenters, you did an excellent job and I also. Next thing on my list is to take a tour of the Agricultural Summit very soon. I also want to congratulate our Warhawk Football Team, you all, you had a remarkable season and I know next year we're going to be better. I also want to comment on our COVID clinic, I am very proud that our, our system is providing that. Ability for our families to take advantage of that, I know there's. I believe one additional clinic here in December and in January, please residents, take advantage of it. I am looking forward to our final Harlem Renaissance. I am looking forward to our final Harlem Renaissance program next week. And for those who have missed, missed several of them, feel free to watch them on Bluefield Hacks and TV. We've been rebroadcasting them all year long and you can always find them on video on demand. So those that missed, please watch them again. And finally, to our students, to our staff, Dr. Thompson, Chairman Harris, to the members, my fellow members of the Board of Education, like to wish you all a very happy holiday and a very happy new year. And by the way, I will not be performing Santa Howard this year. We'll save it again hopefully for next year. But thank you all. Have a good new year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Fryman. From my standpoint, my extended congratulations to the Teachers of the Year. Special recognition to Dr. Bailey. She will be missed when we let her go. We're not letting her go yet. So she's just gonna be away for a few days, but we're gonna keep pulling her in as much as we can. It's been a tough couple of years, but I, I really believe we're gonna come out of this much better off. And congratulations to our football team. You know, in my other life, I was an athletic director for twenty-five years. So I've been through many of these, but I was so proud of this team because they, they really, they fought hard and long. And, you know, they can't, can't always win it, but eleven and one is a heck of a record. It's a heck of a record. So nothing to, to drop your head about. And they will be back next year. Merry Christmas. Happy Kwanzaa. Happy New Year to everyone. And my final note is, Dr. Thompson? Are you listening?
Yes, I am.
I'm, I'm expecting you're gonna take some time and rest. I don't want to, I don't want to call you and hear that you're in the office during vacation. All right. It's time for you to take some time and rest because you have done it all in the past two years and your staff. Wendy, John, Bill, everyone. So I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Ike.
No moves?
Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Hi, everyone.
Good night.
Everyone.